Good enough to please take your seats. Would you be pleased, good enough to take your seats? Okay. Before we commence the next session, Cyril and please take your seat. Yeah, good, thanks. So, just one more announcement before we take the... start the session. Post Maharaja's visit, the team is splitting in two or three. One who have a flight to catch. There are a small group which is going to see the palace. And third, there is a large group which is going to see CFTRI facility. So, if anybody has missed and still want to enroll, outside there is a box, there is a felicitation table. Please join, get your name registered so that we can... we know how many of us are going and we can make a split them in group properly and provide the guide at the palace to visit. Thank you very much. With this, we come to the special session with Tanuja Abhuri. This special session is out-of-box thinking to encourage innovation at workplace. Tanuja is a DEI leader at Amazon for Asia-Pacific, Japan, China, Middle East, Latin America and region. Executive Management Degree from Cornell University and Master degree in Human Resource. Vice Chair for CII IWN Indian Women Network for Telangana Chapter. Twenty-plus years of experience as a human resource professional. Tanuja and Nepta came together some about... Tanuja, more than that, 2000 I think you are, 2018 at Hyderabad, where she participated in a panel discussion. And this time when we approached, she was very kind. And not only she, her another team player, Liz is also here. Welcome you, Liz. She is from UK. And it has been a very, very pleasant bonding, Nepta and Tanuja, for five years. Thank you very much for being here. And she has played leadership role with organizations like G Bank of America, NTT Data and D Shaw. Prior to Amazon, Tanuja was running a startup, Beyond Pink's, an organization using design thinking to solve diversity and inclusion and challenges. Just to let you know, Tanuja would be speaking for about sixty to seventy minutes at its roots, which will be followed by ten to twenty minutes of Q&amp;A. And then we'll break for the lunch. So, Tanuja, please come over. Please, give her a big round of applause, please.
Try one more time. Good morning. Before I start my presentation, couple of declarations, a personal stuff which I want to share with all of you. I was up till 2:30 going and doing these last-minute changes on the presentation to land the message, right? And I had my first call at 7:30 in the morning, which means I got less than five hours of sleep. And I can do a better good morning with a good, nice clap for showing up here for all of you today. Is that the best energy you can give me or can you do better? Thank you so much. The second one is, not only did I come up here, I have my colleague, my manager, who's traveled from UK to be with me for some meetings in Bangalore. And I'm a good negotiator and influencer. I managed to bring her over and sold Mysore and Nepta conference very well to her and she's bitten into it. Now, it's on your hands to make her feel good and saying it was worth conference and worth her time and worth listening to me. So, it's on you to clap for her and welcome her for this beautiful gathering that we are in. Thank you, Liz, for joining in and taking out time to learn something about India and about sustainability on the packaging that we are all doing here. Couple of caveats before I start. I though work for Amazon. Today, I'm not representing Amazon. I'm coming in as an individual because of my relationship with Nepta for last many years. We started this journey few years back when I was on a panel discussion. And this was on all-women panel. There were four hundred people sitting in the room. And take a guess how many women were there in that conference? Yeah, one is a good guess. We were better than that. There were like three or four women out of four hundred people who were there. So, my journey with Nepta started then talking about how do we bring in more diversity, diversity of gender or thoughts, ideas, etc. So, ever since, I've been doing some bit of work with Nepta on and off. Goel sir, thank you very much for inviting me for this conference. And last, I see the hall is full. Mine is the last session. And he sold the tickets very well. He said, "Trailer bahut badhiya, cinema bahut achiyogi." Okay? So, the pressure on me to give you something back is very, very high. And I want to put it out here that when you walk out of this room, it's not that you will have horns and you will say, "I become the best innovator tomorrow." Nothing of that magical sort is going to happen. I just wanted to tell you, whoever wants their ticket back, this is the time. What will though happen is a little shift in the mindset on how do you approach your work and life on a daily basis? Little bit of tools, a little bit of mindset shift on how you look at your teams, how do you look at innovation at workplace? Is that, is that good enough as an expectation? Thank you very much. We can lock the door, Goel sir. Nobody should leave now. Just kidding. All right. Sure. And now, we are going to clap one more time, the loudest, and tell you why we are clapping. Can we do that? Like really loud? The maximum that you can do? Can you do better? Thank you. Now, these claps were for two reasons. One is, Goel sir has gone out to get people. They should know cinema shuru ho gayi hai, andar aana hai. Nahi to darwaza bandh jayega. How many of you know Hindi? Comfortable with Hindi? Okay, sorry Liz, we will keep shifting to Hindi. So, that was for people who were missing out on the show. And the claps were for you to show up here. After yesterday's conference and dinner, I wasn't expecting many people will come in or will come late, etc. Thank you for coming in and thank you for being here. And physically, all of you have gotten yourself here. Yeah? Physically, all of you are sitting. Take a minute to think of what's going on in your head at this point in time. Are you mentally with me here or your mind is somewhere else? Think. Sorry?
Here only.
Here only? Good. How many of you are physically here and mentally here? Nice. And my mind is not here right now. I am though looking very present and talking to you, etc. I have three things which are going on in my head at this point in time. I had a very important meeting yesterday and I did not do very well and I'm not very happy about it. So, I'm carrying the residue of that meeting in my head. And the second one which is going in, I'm looking forward to go and see that palace after this session. So, that's going on in my head on what's going to happen, how will it come up? And I have a flight to take. I want to be back in Bangalore on time. So, what am I doing? My mind is either in the past or... I'm supposed to be here talking to you, being fully present, but mind is like a... dash, dash, dash. Fill in for me. Mind is like a monkey which swings, would never let you sit here. Be lagam khoda, absolutely. So, what I would... yeah, it's swinging, right? So, what I would like you to do is keep your monkey aside for some time. And we have paid lot of money to buy this monkey. There is a physical monkey which is in our head and then there is another monkey that we carry everywhere we go. You want to see the monkey? I'm carrying my monkey right now. You want to see? Yes? It's an expensive one. This is the monkey I have. I am so tempted to go and see what's the next mail, what's the next WhatsApp message, when is my son going to call, what's happening? Whenever it's not needed, I continue to go feed into my monkey. So, my humble request for next fifty-odd minutes is to keep the urge to go to your monkey and feed the monkey and be with me. And my promise is, it's not going to shift your world three sixty degrees, but you will have something that you will take back with you for innovation at workplace. Is that a good deal? So, there will be an urge for you to tempt... temptation for you to keep looking, but remind yourself that I want to be fully present for the next one hour, mind, body, soul. Fair? Okay. And the last one is, it is an interactive session. I don't want to give you Jnana and go and say, "Madam ne kuch aaya tha, bataaya tha." Let's engage in conversation. I want to tickle your brain cells in many ways. If you have thoughts, ideas, keep bringing it in. I will try as much we can engage and interact. And if you have thoughts, just put it up or just keep speaking so that we are engaging with each other rather than a monologue. Yes? Too many contexts. Now, all of you have been in this industry. I am a newcomer. I don't know anything about packaging. I am not an expert here. What I'm going to talk about is innovation and not innovation in your workplace. Innovation as a concept and how do you shift small needle movements in your mindset to get better innovation? Now, there are certain ways we have been living our life. We do things in a certain way. It has given us results at workplace or in life and we continue to do that on and on and on. We don't know how to shift gear and do things differently. What we end up doing is, we are in a cycle. I don't know how to break this cycle and do innovation. And this whole hawa which is made about innovation, aapke liye ek R&amp;D sell hona chahiye, aapka dimaal aalag aalag hona chahiye, you have to sit separately. Mindset has to be different versus it can be a day-to-day innovation as you live, as you breathe, which means it has to become a part and component of your life. For that, you need to shift the way you approach the problem statement. So, what got you here? What made you successful so far will not get you to the next level. What do you need to do to change it? You need to rewire, rethink, reimagine. Big words? Sabko karana hai, karana kaise pata nahi hai. Yes? All of us want to challenge ourselves. All of us want to have a new habit, new ways of working, new ways of thinking. How do you then shift your mindset? Here is one example which I want to bring it for you. Very simple thing. Imagine this to be your brain. And the first box says, "I know what I know." An example of this is, "I know I can ride a bicycle. I know I can cook. I know what I know." And this is a very simple comfort zone that we operate in. What is the next box? "I know what I don't know." And the example for this would be? "I know what I know, I know what I don't know. I don't know how to ride a car. I don't know how to ride an aeroplane. I don't know how to solve complex math solutions." Any other examples that you can think of? "I know something and I know what I don't know." What are those examples? Flying an airplane. What else?
Expectation of our life.
Expectation, I don't know. I know what I don't know. Now, there is a big box in our head which is the largest, which is the unexplored area which says, "I don't know what I don't know," which is the black hole which needs to shift between box B or a box A and which is where innovation happens. The aha moments happen when you are moving from "I don't know what I don't know" to the box "I know what I don't know." What I don't know is the largest in your head. And what we will do now is, take a few examples, take a few mantras to shift this black box into one of these two. I want to give you one example and be with me and let's explore this, "I don't know what I don't know." This is an example of Indian Railway, the local trains in Mumbai. And the problem statement they had was, there were eight to ten deaths every day when people crossed the rail tracks on Mumbai locals. Every day, there are eight to ten deaths. This was becoming a menace for them. The municipality and the railways came together and gave a project to a design company to come up with a solution and find a solution where they can reduce these deaths. All of you are those consultants. And if you were to design some solutions to reduce the deaths because people just cross railway tracks, all of us know that, what would you give a solution as a consultant to the railways? Danger signs, yes? Put a danger sign on the crossing. What else? Construct over bridge? Barricades? What else? Education, awareness? Road cross, mat cross kariye, aapne cigarette ke packet ke upper dekha hai, danger likha hota hai, fir bhi log karte. So, you educate people, create a campaign. What else can you do? Give me solutions, quick ones, simple ones. Have small groups? Provide messages? In local language? Sorry, gone? Impose heavy fines, great idea. Drive slower in the areas where people are crossing. I'll explain the problem little bit more. People just cross wherever they like. That's how we cross in India. And it could be anywhere. If I build under bridge, I don't know where to build an under bridge. It could be kilometers of area where they are crossing. Over bridge, it's expensive. I do not have space to make it. Or education where, like on a cigarette box, it's saying, "Dangerous for your health." People continue to do what they have to do. What else can we do? Try to analyze. Thank you very much for the queue. Try to analyze. So, this company did not do anything which is heavyweight, expensive solutions. This is a human-centric solution they came up with. They tried to look for the behavior and the patterns of why people are behaving the way they are and what's really happening. What's going on in people's head? Everybody knows if I cross, I will die. And he sees his neighbor dying, eight people every day dying. They know the danger and they still put themselves into danger to go and cross. So, they did this study and it's a revelation on what really happened. This is the solution they came up with. This is "I don't know what I don't know" solution. Looks so simple and humble. Let me take a minute to explain what this solution looks like. They painted these strips on every meter. That's the solution. And if aap sir khujaa raha hai ki yeh solution kya hota hai, let me explain this to you. Speed is relative to something which is a standing object. It's a pole, it's a light bulb, it's something. I can say that there is something coming. The speed of anything which is coming in is relative to a standing object. In this case, the standing object is these three, is these yellow stripes. So, when I'm here, when the train is three stripes away, I know I should not be crossing. That's the sense of judgment which you are allowing people to make better judgment of their lives and enabling them to make better choices, better decisions. A good example of this is... yeah, you like that, you can clap. Was there a aha moment where "I don't know what I don't know" got a little shifted, saying to what point sir said, "Analyze the problem better. Don't have an urge to solve a problem." Speed, if you have seen, have you ever crossed a road at the night time? Your ability to judge how a train or a car is coming is blurred, is much lesser because you do not have an object which is static in control to say, "What's the speed at which something is coming your way?" So, the accidents are much more at night-time than at daytime because you do not have a point of reference for you. All they did was created point of reference for them, for people to make better judgment. And do you want to know how much of accidents were prevented by doing this? Seventy-five percent of deaths in Mumbai local were controlled only by creating those yellow stripes on the road. So, the point here is, our human mind works in a way where we love to go to a solution. Koi problem saamne dikhti hai, ghar me dikhti hai, office me dikhti hai, jaldi se usko solve kar do. Sometimes, you need to stop that urge and that's the principle for innovation in terms of, is there a better, a different solution which is existing? Stay on the problem statement. Be uncomfortable with the problem statement for a little longer time before you jump into solution. You may have a aha moment where you will continue to challenge that, "I don't know what I don't know" and I shifted to something else. Yes? Perfect. Let me take you through a second example. This is mindfulness. Sabne yeh English ka word suna hoga, being mindful. Abhi humne bola tha, we were talking about, don't look at your phone, stay alert, be in the moment, etc. People, lot of people said, "Do meditation, you will be living your life more mindfully." Anybody who knows what's mindfulness? Being in the moment, yes? Involvement, being there, fully, being fully there. Not just absorbing, being fully there. Let me put a few examples and tell me, what do you make of these? I'm going to run a few random slides and observe there is something which I'm wanting to convey through these slides. And all of you are mindful. You told me, you've got your phones aside and you are fully alert. What's the message here? You have to open. Here, here, here? Sorry? Togetherness, okay? Anything else? Freshness, okay? Don't kill me when I give you this example. These are everyday objects which nature has provided to you to take inspiration for packaging. Now, look at this situation. Now, look at, how is this packed by nature? How is this packed by nature? How is this packed by nature? When I'm opening a peel, how beautifully nature has given us this delicate fruit? It's got layers in between and it's got a hard shell for it to protect itself. How many of you have taken inspiration from simple, everyday objects around you? This is just one set of sequences which I've given you. Every day, we eat fruit. But how many times have you seen, can I package something which is as beautiful as a pomegranate? There is a lot to learn on packaging on this. Anybody from Yash Papers, Yash Pakka? This is your... Ved Krishna's example, by the way. This is not my original one. I'm doing some work with Yash. So, lot of learning from that. I'll explore this further for you. It's basically, these could be the objects. Look at the three or four examples I've given you here. You are in packaging in Lashri. There is one such example is, what's available for you in front of you? How many of you have enjoyed the unpacking of a banana or an orange and see it unlayers slowly? Yeah, we don't see the joy because we are not there in the moment. Think of how you open up a pomegranate. It just opens up and comes out with a little cut. What does it tell you? As much as packing is, packaging is important, unpackaging is also an experience which you need to create for your customers while you're thinking of your industry. The other one is, there is no ambiguity in the message on what a pomegranate looks like. It will deliver you a pomegranate. A banana, you know by the look of it. So, there is no ambiguity in the message. Your packaging should be such where you're saying, "What inside is what is outside." How beautifully are you able to give the message about what it consists of? That's the beauty of innovation if you're taking everyday natural objects. How many of you have seen apple packaging? It is one of the breakthrough in design on how beautifully it gets packed. Eight out of ten time, people do not want to throw the apple packaging box. They keep it for eternity. All of you, many of you? There are many such packaging that we like. So, when you're creating an experience, keep the user in mind. Think of packaging and unpackaging. The last one here, a banana is rotten. You don't need to open a banana. You know it from outside. So, what's the message there? Your packaging should be conveying the message that you want to convey by just an external field. Simplify and invent. This is one principle we apply at Amazon. Simplicity of messaging and simplicity of picking up everyday objects and building in on innovation. So, one lesson which you have when you go back to your workplace tomorrow on innovation is being mindful of being fully present on where we are. With me so far? Do I need to check or is it good? Thank you. I have a question for you. Where do you get most inspired, most innovative during a day? Difficult question, right? Yeah? Depends is the answer. That's what I was looking for. Early morning. Over a cup of tea. Our favorite place, which is the private space that we have for the ten, fifteen minutes, that's the most innovative space all of us have. Where else? Together, each one of us, when you are with people, okay? What else? Before you sleep. Where else? Yes? Yes, absolutely. That was the answer I was looking for. He enjoys each moment of that, absolutely. What else? Yes, please? Whenever you're close to nature? With your girlfriend? Good answer. Yes? Meditation, yoga, driving, music, cooking, hobbies, etc. Where should you be most innovative? I am innovative while driving, but expectation is... at workplace. I did not hear workplace as an answer. We say, when I'm cooking, I'm doing meditation, I'm somewhere, I'm somewhere, etc. And we want a workplace to be the most innovative. What's going on? We bring somebody else to workplace and we say, "I'm going to sit like this." When one Mr. X, who will do this eight-hour job, "I will go back. When I'm driving, I'll be innovative." That's my zone. I'm not in my zone when I'm at workplace. It could be. When you think of... Very beautiful answer. What he's saying is, workplace innovation happens everywhere else but at workplace. I could be cooking, I get aha idea and then... So, what is happening while cooking? What is shifting? What's happening then at workplace? You are concentrated, you are so focused in cooking, you enjoy and you are at the best. I want to take you through one example of this company called Zappos. How many of you have heard of this company? You have. It's not an Indian brand, so it's okay if you have not heard of them. They make shoes. It's a very cluttered market. The top ten brands, they shouldn't be there in the space they are in. But they are there in the top ten only because of their customer obsession and how they engage with their end. engage with their end client. Okay? Now, how do you think a customer obsession could make a great company? Why do you think that is so important in a shoes business? They would have a call center executive, if I were to return a shoe, no questions asked, the empowerment for the executive is so much that they are allowed to make decisions. If you call a Swiggy or any other company, they'll say, no sir, I cannot do this, I have to ask my manager etcetera. There are layers of executive decisions which happen. In this case, they empowered the people to make decisions and that's why it's one of the most customer centering organization which is leading to becoming the top ten shoe company. Now, over a period of time, what happened is their ranking was following down, their revenues were going down and they said something is going wrong, we need to fix it. And what do you think they did to address that problem? They started looking at the executives who were taking the calls and started observing a pattern and a behavior that they were moving with a breakneck speed and hiring people very, very fast. They slowed down the hiring process and they came up with this formula of saying, if you leave my company, I am going to pay you. Leave my company, I will pay you. Have you heard of any company saying, kam chhod ke jaiye, main aapko pais dunga? Take this idea to your HR, they'll say, paagal ho gaye. Or HR comes up with this idea, they'll say, are you mad? Why are you giving money to people to leave? And the interesting concept here was, they had a four weeks of onboarding journey. If you join on first week, if you don't like, if you leave, we will give you four thousand dollars. In the second week, if you leave, if you still don't like it, we'll give you three. And by the time you're in the last week, you still don't want to be there, I will pay you thousand dollars, just leave. End of it, out of the hundred people, if there are twenty people who are left, they are happy to continue with those twenty because they believe in the company's organization, philosophy and the customer obsession and that is why they choose to be there. Those are the twenty where the company wants to invest and say, I will build my most customer obsessed company. I lose four thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars in the, on the way, that is not valuable as much as giving the end customer as an experience. So, when they do the math, they are saying, I would rather have people leave who are not believing in my philosophy than having them sitting in the organization because of the money part. The point in question here is, when you are building an organization, how innovative are your workplaces? All of you are very senior people who are sitting here, you have teams. And I would urge you to go back and ask this question, where do you feel most innovative? The answers you have already given while driving, while cooking, the first fifteen minutes of my day when I'm in my bathroom, or tea, or meditation. Eight out of ten times, you will not hear from them, I feel innovative at workplace. Your role as leaders, as scientists who are looking at creating that innovative organization is not only being innovative for yourself, what kind of fungible organization that you're creating which is enabling innovation on a daily basis? This is a extreme example and we do not want to get out of our comfort zone and try out or experiment and that is the biggest deterrent for us when we are looking at innovation and saying, I will take that risk, I will push myself and try out different modules. If it fails, it's okay, but only then will the innovation and that workplace culture that you will be able to build. So, think about how do you engage with your employees, with your teams and the workplace going forward if you are wanting to create a space of work culture and innovation? With me? Mindful? Yes? Thank you. If somebody wants to clap, please go ahead, that's fine. I want to give you another example, this is about challenge your status quo. I want to show you a video here. If you could play the video for me please? And observe what's happening here, it's going to move very, very fast. Thank you. So, what was the video about? Creative? Trading, yes, trading. What else? Small idea can take you somewhere. Incremental values, absolutely. Do you think that when the person started, he knew he's going to end up with a house with a paper clip? Did he knew, did he know that he will have to do ten trades, fifteen trades, five hundred trades to get to where he wants to be? What did he start with? Just a simple, humble, small idea. I'll pause here and repeat, simple, small, humble idea without knowing the end goal. How does it sound like when you are innovating? It sounds great and on paper, you take this to your boss and what the boss will say? Kya paagal hai? Kuchh bhi nahi hai ismein, kuchh nahi hai, kya kar raha hu? Bada idea leke aao. Kuchh alag soch ke leke aao. Right? And we get caught in saying, I have to change this world, I have to break through everything. This person did, and there are many people who tried doing this later on by the way. There is tons of videos you will find on YouTube. Can I have my slides back please? I have to, okay. So, what starts in our head as a simple, small solution can become bigger, better, only if you were to challenge and say, I will stay with it, I don't know where it will go. And the flip side of that is, you may continue to be there, maybe the person would have stopped after third trade or fourth trade and saying, I got this, I will live with it. You don't know when to stop, which is a good problem to have. But if you want to innovate, you want to start somewhere, start small, start humble, start challenging yourself, you don't know where you will go. I want to give you an example of this, two pictures here, they are all energy drinks. Lot of us do not consume so much of energy drinks in India except for Red Bull, which is the most popular brand. These are the top few brands globally on energy drinks. If I were an innovator in the energy drink market, I go to my manager and say, sir, hum log naya energy drink launch karenge. What do you think my manager will say? Koi dusa ra kam nahi hai. Itne market me drinks hai, tumko kya lag raha hai? Naya launch karo ge, to tum kuchh uchhaal loge. Do you think my idea will get funded? It's a very busy market space and look at what got created, what's the difference between this and this drink? Go on. Time frame? What else? Appearance. Performance guarantee, uska naam dekhiye. Five hour energy. This is again what we were talking about on packaging, there is no ambiguity right there. It's saying indirect message, Red Bull, Monster, vo seeda mukh par bol raha aapko, five hour energy. It's like so much on your face. What did they do differently? How did they land up where they are? It's a billion dollar company by the way. Customer, what else? One package twelve bottles. It's got convenience, you can put it in your pocket, you are going for a very high important meeting, you want a drink, you can carry it anywhere. It's availability, it's not carrying stock space in a supermarket, it's actually kept at the aisle where they are doing the billing so that you feel that I can pick up one bottle, it's not much. The packaging itself, the size itself was an innovation, not necessarily the drink inside. I'm not even going to the drink part, but I'm saying you can still make a breakthrough by changing one lever, one point. How many of you have heard about the red ocean versus blue ocean? What does it mean? There's a red ocean market and a blue ocean market. Yes, please sir. Like the word says, red is blood everywhere, it's heavy competition, very difficult to enter. He entered the red ocean market and he created a blue ocean strategy for himself and created a niche of market. Now you see lot of these energy drinks which are there on the small aisles are of that size. It has created a new segment of market just by challenging the status quo and saying, I will still do an innovation in what is existing. So, the two examples which I gave, one is this and about the paper clip. I want to summarize this part here and say, do not need to go out of the box and say, kal main bahut kuchh uchhaal loga. Within your space, you will be able to find pockets of innovation. Go back, you need to be more mindful. Go back, you need to be challenging your mindset on how you look at a problem. You're with me? Yes? Okay. Let me give you another example here. Why am I talking about Dyson vacuum cleaner and I'm talking about prototype here? Have you heard of this Dyson company? The latest innovation that they have is a hair drying machine which is a breakthrough by the way. Just go a little research on it, you will find tons of things which they are doing in this. This design which they have is a breakthrough in the way people do the vacuum cleaning. What's the difference between this vacuum cleaner and any other big designs which are there in the market? Handy? Wireless? What else? Easy? Effective? Okay? How many prototypes do you think they did to land to breaking this design? Take a guess. How many times they would have done prototyping in their R and D labs to reach this design? One, two, fifty, hundred, five hundred, how many? Thousand times? Anybody else? Five times? Five thousand one hundred twenty-six failed vacuum design prototypes. My question to you ladies and gentlemen, when do you give up when you're experimenting with your innovative ideas? At what point in time you say, I'm done with this? Goes back to the first point, staying on the problem statement longer so that you are reaching a space. We give up and your managers will give up, the system will give up, organization will give up. The point here is, if you want to try something, you need to experiment enough to fail before you reach somewhere. And here are a few basic principles of prototyping. Prototyping is something so very close, what are the other words for prototyping? You do this PDCA cycle, what else? What are the words you use in your industry? Miniature, yes, miniature? FIP. SWAT, what else? You make a model before you actually, you experiment with different types of paper, you experiment and then before you launch a prototype. The fundamental principle here is, it should be rough because we get so attached to the design we make, we feel, ye world me sabse acha hai, ye hi sabse badhya chaliya. Do not get attached emotionally to the design that you are making and the principle there is, it should be rough enough for you to throw and not get emotionally attached. It should be solvable enough, faster enough for you to experiment and keep moving. It should be detached from you. Very, very difficult after you do fifth, tenth, hundred design, I'm saying five thousand times if you're doing it, the chances are you are going to get attached to the prototype that you've made. Have you ever experienced that? Even if you're doing five times, you feel, oh, this is the best model, don't touch it, I want to live with it, this is the great model. How many times are you okay to throw it in the dustbin and start? The fundamental principle for innovation is you should be able to go closer to the design fast enough and rough enough. So, what are you going to do when you go back at workplace tomorrow? What would you shift and learn something from here on prototyping? One thing that you can carry back with you. Listen to the boss? Good one, thank you very much. What else? Sorry? Yeah, out of the, you will be thrown out of the company, okay? Maybe the boss is right sometimes who is saying, continue prototyping, you haven't reached that point, don't get emotional about it, continue to stay on the problem statement longer. Maybe the boss has the vision which maybe you do not have and that's why sometimes listen to boss is not a bad idea. What else? Number of attempts. Build that resilience in you and say, I'm okay with the fiftieth failed design, hundredth failed design. Connect this back to the clip example where, where the person started did not know where they are going to end or land in. Similarly, you need to be fungible enough to move. So, this is the mantra for prototyping. Build, fail, iterate, repeat and the cycle goes on till such time you reach a model. Here is a simple design model which we talk about which is ideation. How do you do? Tools of the business, what if and you keep innovating, keep changing. These are simple ones which are available on Google, you just say, design principles and you will be able to see models like this where you can continue to challenge each of your components. The next one is about which idea sounds better. I have two statements here, read them, I'll read it with you. It says, our boutique sells latest fashion clothes for all sizes, shapes and at great price. That's statement number one. Statement number two is, we make people look beautiful. Which one do you think resonates better or well with you? Message on the white? Why? All size, all shapes, not going well with you? That is the target. What else? Straight and clear. Feels good. Fashion, you don't like fashion, okay. You like fashion, okay. So, you like this statement? You are saying you like the red one. You will, you will go to this shop. There are the signage or advertisement for two boutiques, two different boutiques. One is saying this and the other one is saying this. That is how you see it, but this is written outside, this is their advertisement. There are two ads which are running. Ad one is boutique number one which has got this and the boutique two is saying, we make people look beautiful. Which shop will you go to? Great point, sir says, white one sounds very expensive, I will think. Great point, sir says, "White one sounds very expensive, I will think if I want to go there." Great idea. Yes, yes, please. It hurts? Okay. Okay. Sorry, one second sir. जोर से बोलिए. जो beautiful नहीं है वो इसमें जाएगा, okay? One, one second, yes. It's, it's the right one, yes please. It's about you, it's about you. That's the message which I am wanting to give. There is something called human-centric design principle. In this, the hero, the second one which is the white one, the hero of the story is you. It is not about me, what I want to sell. I have clothes of all size, shape etcetera. Versus you are talking to me as a human and saying, "I would like to make you look even more beautiful than what you are, come to my shop." And what Goelser added to this is saying, "It sounds more oomph, it sounds more expensive, cool etcetera. I will think twice before going there, it may be more expensive." So you have done a brand positioning for yourself in a very different way by having the second statement. Now what shifted here between the two? The solution is not about the size, shape or anything else. It was about human being the center of the problem statement. I'll repeat myself and this is one principle for innovation. Human being the center of the problem statement. It's not the paper that you are making, it is not the material, it is not the technology that you have, it is the human. What pro-human problem are you solving? Everything around is the solution that you are building. By the way, you are using this material, by the way, you are doing something else to solve that problem for the human. Think about it on how you approach your work on a daily basis. It's very inhuman and saying that I am building this high-tech new age polymer or some technology to solve a paper problem. Versus you going back and saying, "I am solving a problem for a human being who goes to a shop. He wants to have a better shopping experience, he or she wants to have a better experience of carrying my bag." Or for Amazon, my opening, opening of a package should be an experience. What do I do to create that experience for Amazon? So, the moment you are shifting the problem from solution and saying, "Human is the center for what I want to do", chances are, your solutions will be sticking better and also will have a better solution which is catering to that human being. I'll take a pause, take your thoughts before I go further. Any thoughts here? Very important point if I were to go back on this slide. There is a climax happening here. What is the climax? I walk into a shop, I get something nice and I come out beautiful. Okay, there is a story and the climax looks very pretty, very beautiful. Right? Now, when you are dealing with humans, when you are doing innovation, what is your climax? What, how are you building your story? What is going on while you are solving a problem? How are you approaching that problem statement makes the entire supply chain of solution look very, very different? What is your climax of the innovation that you are wanting to build? Start writing down, start doing that prototype. You will, I will, I will challenge you that you will come up with a very different solution on solving a large human problem than thinking, "I will solve this technology problem." Yeah? So approach your problem statement from solving a human problem. Last one which I want to say is, "Humans remember businesses that remember humans." Take a second to take this inside you. Humans remember businesses that remember human. How human is your solution, is human is the center for the innovation that you do. And while you think of this, very important part, point which I want to bring in here and this is something which I keep bringing to IPTA all the time is, while humans are a center for your solution, who is your end customer? Is it a man or a woman or a child or who? It is a community and community has who? A combination of all of these people? I and you. Totality, which means fifty percent of your customers are women. Yeah? And how many of you are innovators who are sitting in here in this room who are? Yes, please sir. You're saying something? Okay. So the point which I'm wanting to make is, when you are looking at innovation, you need to bring in diverse ideas, diverse thoughts onto the table. And you need to replicate of how a customer looks like. A typical customer profile is fifty percent women. Are you catering to that market? If you are, it's high time you start looking at how your teams are composed, how many women are there on the table while you're designing your solutions. A very good important point for you to ponder and saying, "My solutions cannot be designed separately than women, keeping one section of the society away." I'll give you an example on this one. In the nineteen eighties, there was a big box departmental store in America which was like breakthrough. They're saying, "We will build these large departmental stores like your Walmart types." And they designed these stores keeping an average American per male height because the people who were designing the store were all male. And who is the primary consumer of a departmental store? Who goes to a store? A housewife at, in the afternoon, post lunch, takes a three-year-old son and goes to the departmental store. And the aisle size is made keeping the men in mind. It was a disaster of design. They had to revamp and bring all of those designs out and redo the whole thing only when they started looking at diversity of thought on the innovation table and saying, "How do I look at a problem from an holistic lens?" Have you seen the surf? I think it's the, the pink color one, Vanish and Surf Packaging? Your, lot of you don't wash clothes at home, I can see that clearly, so you would know. The packaging earlier was a blue box, very straight type of line of boxes. They shifted and made a very curvy pink color box. It's very attractive and the primary consumer for detergent is who? They shifted the market and saying, "I need to address that." What did they do to get to that point? They started having diversity of thought on the table while they were doing the innovation. So when we say human-centric, part of it is also creating space for diverse ideas. So it's a great time for us to start looking at bringing in different diverse perspectives to the table. Yes? I will stop here and I will give you a small story to close with. Are you ready or mind is full right now? Good, alright. And this is story, something maybe you can carry with you for the rest of your innovation journey. It will remind you of little things that you could look at. Now, this is a very simple, small story about this Kaveri river, very close to Kaveri river. This is rainy season, so there are multiple frogs which are kind of breeding around that. All of you have seen everywhere, lot of frogs. And there were small baby frogs which were just kind of playing around the water body. And one of the frog, baby frog started walking, going up on the pole and it was slipping because it was a slippery pole. One frog started and then small, another baby frog came, it started doing, suddenly it became a game for the baby frogs. And the parents were going around and they saw, "Hey, this looks very interesting, very smart competitive exercise of, game for our children. Let's have a sports, Olympic sports for baby frogs to go on the, whoever goes on the top of the pole will win a medal." So lot of these kids came and then they started going up and down and they were not able to do. Thirty minutes passed, all the parents were around, ताली बजा रहे हैं, हमारा बेटा बच्चा आगे जा रहा है. And then forty-five minutes happened, ten baby frogs tired, dropped out. And then another five minutes, the parents who were there around started becoming very cynical and saying, "ये तो नहीं होगा, ये लगता नहीं है, possible है, ये ऐसी बेकार, हम लोग time waste कर रहे हैं." They start becoming cynical and they start leaving. And then one hour passes, another set of frogs leave, parents are disgruntled, they leave. And at the end, there is one baby frog who manages to make it on top of the pole. He is the winner, uh-huh. Now, they say, "देखो, possible है, हम लोग भी जीत सकते हैं." We will have a small ceremony, we have to give a medal and felicitate this baby frog who has managed to do it in spite of so much of difficulties. So they call the baby frog, felicitate and they give him the mic and say, "There were so many frogs who were giving up, you were the one who continued." आपने कैसे अपने आपको resilient रखा? There were so many parents who were saying, "ये तो ना हो पाएगा, नहीं चलेगा, नहीं चलेगा." You were the one who continued. What do you think that the baby frog said? उसको सुना, बोलता है, मेरे को कोई praise कर रहा था या मेरे को cynical हो रहा था, मुझे कुछ फर्क नहीं पड़ा. "I was doing what I was meant to do. It didn't bother me, it didn't matter if I was going up or down. What mattered to me is listen to my own voice and do what I want to do." So you will have many roadblocks, you will have many challenges where it could be a manager, it could be the environment, it could be the things that you are playing with which will continue to tell you that it's time you stop. This is not going to happen, maybe you are not getting a breakthrough. The only thing that you can do is continue to challenge yourself and say, "I am that baby frog who will continue to try and thrive till such time I get that Dyson prototype and say, 'I will have a breakthrough.'" Thank you very much for having me. Thank you. I'm open to questions and open to thoughts. Anybody who wants to just come up and talk about one thing that you are taking back with you? Was it too good, too bad? Can it be a natural trait or an acquired trait? Great question, I will handle that, sir was saying something, go ahead sir. Sorry, say it again sir.
To get their small ideas to get success. We have to listen to the workers or the shopful people to take their small ideas to get success, to motivate them.
So idea is never small or big, you have seen, it could be a paper clip, it can come from anywhere, it can be done in any place. We need to break that myth that workplace only is the place for innovation. And if I have to be, if I am a manager, I can innovate. If we break that, you will get ideas from the places you cannot imagine that you will get thoughts about. I'll take a few minutes to answer that question, it's a deeper question, I will answer that sir.
Mine is not a question. कहते हैं कि वो हमारे काम आते हैं, तो हम उनके काम आते हैं. वो स्पीच देते हैं, तो हम तालियां बजाते हैं.
Oh, thank you.
आपने बहुत से तालियां बजवाई हम लोगों से, बहुत अच्छी स्पीच थी. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
बहुत अच्छा लगा.
Thank you. Thank you. Any one or two things that you are taking back with you? I, as I said in the past, it's not that tomorrow everything will change, it's incremental, yes sir. Incremental, small changes, not exponential changes that you are looking for. I'll come to you sir.
Problems by definition are supposed to be complicated, solutions need not be.
Absolutely, solutions can be absolutely simple, yes sir.
You stand alone.
You stand alone.
Because there are three hundred males, men are there, but only one woman, you are talking there, we are listening, that is.
Okay, thank you so much, really respect that.
Madam, अब question मेरी तरफ से. आपने, आपने जितने भी एक example दिए, वो सब foreign countries के दिए, क्या हिंदुस्तान में कोई innovation 也 नहीं होता?
The good point, absolutely. बहुत से example इसीलिए दिए हैं. The size and scale of innovation for these are a benchmark in the industry. That is why I have picked up. Otherwise, आप देखिए, local innovation, I can give you ten innovations which are there, right there. I will give you a list of those which are absolutely, we, हम जो बोलते हैं, there is a book called Jugad. I don't know if you have seen, it is talking about homegrown innovation. To the extent they are saying, आपको मटके के समान से, मटका का जो मिट्टी होता है, उससे लोगों ने fridge बनाया है, राजस्थान में. It is as simple as it can get. So there is no dearth of examples. I talked to a lot of international audience, perhaps this is my international pitch because people relate to that. But I'll keep that in mind absolutely. Give me one minute sir, sir standing, yes.
The one thing I'll take away is the finding a place where you feel most excited and how to make the workplace the most excited place. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you. Even better. Yes. No, international also is as Jugad as it can get. If you look at Amazon, it started in a garage as scrappy as you can get, okay? Apple started in a garage with no laptops, they had nothing, they were doing on loaner laptops. So, anything that starts is scrappy, okay? And it looks fancy because it's outside. We have done, Infosys started at a garage with very, very scrappy things. Polaris started on a scooter, they never, they, they sold their scooter to do the innovation. So it's not that their stories are beautiful and pretty and our stories are not. Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. I hear. Sure. Absolutely. Okay. I T C. I T C is a classic case where they have done phenomenal experiment with, from the grains to the way they connect with the marketplace. That itself is an innovation. So, just want to address this question because many of you would be on the same space. There is no dearth of examples of Indian innovation and it is not that we just do scrappy innovation and it is just Jugad. That appears to be so because we, we know that part of the journey. How it converted and how it became big conglomerate, we do not know so. It's not, and all of these examples started from very, very basic, simple, humble starting. We don't talk about that, we talk about this beautiful picture. But this is important to keep in mind when we are talking about prototype or otherwise. Innovation starts with being scrappy, as scrappy as you go. And there is a principle that we say in Amazon, "Till we know better." That's the model that we have, keep doing, keep changing till we know better, this is what it is available. So there is no end statement for innovation. Yes, there was somebody at the back, yes sir.
The, the la, the last.
We'll, we'll just take that first.
Hello, hello?
Yes, please sir.
Yeah. The last slide of yours ended with humans. Are you constraining yourself only to humans?
Any problem in the world that you are wanting to solve has a human element. And I want you to go deeper and understand this on, the challenges from your industry to my industry to anything, the core and common is human as a center. Everything else revolves around it. And when you look at human, I'm not talking only about being human and that's why that's a constraint. You need to look at. You need to look at how the design principles apply when you have a human as a center of a solution. Your ability to solve problems will change because what you are wanting to solve is not a problem, but you are wanting to have solutions which are making changes in the mankind. So, you are taking the problem statement to a higher level rather than solving one technology problem, etc. So, human is not a constraint. Human is an enabler who will become a center of every solution that you will look for. Yes, sir. One second, sir. He wants. Mantras of becoming a good administrator. Okay. I'll take few minutes to answer that question, sir.
Ma'am, what I think, what people are talking about Jugad. So, how I see thing is, it is an opportunity for us where we can grab that opportunity and make it a success. So, Jugad is a result of an opportunity which we try to create in our customer or wherever place we go. So, I think that opportunity we should grab first and then try to make some Jugad and go to a successful story. So, I think that is the apt answer for that.
So, Jugad is looked at from very cool space to very low market space. That's how we position Jugad in two spaces. And both are the right things to do. The equivalent of Jugad is scrappy solutions. That's how I see. When you have scrappy solutions, you can continue to build prototypes over it and bring method to madness. You can scale, you can do everything. Even if you were to go to an investor, if your design is half as good, if you have a scrappy solution, more like, more chances that you will get your funding. So, Jugad is not a bad thing. It's a start of a journey. Yes. Sir, could you repeat your question? You had a question yourself, sir. Yes. Is innovation...
Is innovation a natural trait or an acquired trait?
Okay.
Just like perhaps entrepreneurship.
Leadership, yes. Okay. I want to turn it around to all of you who are sitting here, who by chance landed into the role of where you are or you chose to be in the space you are. There are two paths. I was doing my twelfth and then I did some chemistry or some engineering and then I found this job. I landed somewhere and then I am in the space of virtue of my path. And the second journey for many people could be, I want to innovate, I want to do something and by design you chosen to be there. Okay? In both the cases, do you think innovation is something which is, somebody has to do innovation? I have to learn innovation? I have to go for a class, some session, some methodology? I am not born creative, I cannot do it. What's your opinion? Are innovators born or you can become innovator at any point in time? How many of you believe you are born, people have to be born innovators? It's a inherent skill. And the rest of the people believe?
Because all the innovations, see, you look at Indian organizations and all the past innovation, you will find some people doing innovations over a period of time. Like in good old days, like you know, I'm saying, you can take the case of I'm saying. There are so many scientists, you know, they were...
So many scientists who are working a lot, experiment.
But he is the one who innovated the most. I think it's a very valid and pertinent question. I think in most cases, it's an inherent skill than acquired one. Like, there are a lot of courses on leadership. There are born leadership. They'll become better leader. The people can definitely acquire, you know, through, you know, events like this. The leadership, you know, they can attend sessions. But there are born leaders. And eventually you see, they show leadership right, no matter irrespective of the role they are in. They will start showing at the beginning itself, at the primitive stage of their career, they'll start showing innovative, you know, skill or maybe the leadership skill. So, to me is, like it's more of an inherent skill. It can be bettered. It can be bettered by doing, you know, these kind of, you know, classes or maybe, you know, sessions. But it's more of an inherent. That's my belief.
Okay. It has to be inherent and then you can acquire. Any other thought? Yes.
There is a common link between these traits of leadership, entrepreneurship and innovation. I think that common link is ability to take risks. All these things involve some sort of a risk-taking at some point. Ability to take risks and stay the path. I mean, you should...
So, the question here is, can I have an inherent ability to take risk?
Yes. I think that is an inherent ability. Not many people will be able to do that.
Okay. I'll give you example to break this into two pieces. One is, are you born innovator or can you acquire the skill? There are two parts to innovation. There is a skill and there is a will. Break it down, skill and a will. There is a step-by-step methodology for you to innovate. Being, doing a prototype, going with a mindset to experiment, etc., etc., which is a skill. And the second part is the will. What is a will? What is a will?
Ability to take failures.
And there are, list goes on. Okay? The will part. Now, if you look at a human brain, there are two parts which is the left brain and the right brain. What is the role of a left brain and the right brain? What does the left brain do? Mind and heart, right? So, there is the left brain which does the analytics, the data, the difficult decisions, mathematical reasoning, etc., which goes into the left brain. The right brain is the creative, the emotional, the non-reasoning part of the brain. The feel part is on the right side. Okay? Now, there are people who could be extremely left-brained. There are people who are the right brain. Now, when you are looking at innovation, there is these two combination of these two things which need to come together for you to be able to sustain that journey. Okay? If I believe in an idea, I am a great risk-taker. But I do not have the engineering part or the design part in my head. How do I innovate? I will fail or vice versa. So, there are skills which can be acquired. But inherently, you do need to have a certain mindset which is needed for an innovation. You... The degree of innovation may differ from one person to the other. All of us innovate in our own life. We have our own journeys of innovation, big or small. It's not necessarily that it's a saleable idea, but we do that. How much do you push that is on to you to up the bar or low the bar? Yes. I think we are almost on time. Sir did ask one question which was, how to become a good administrator? All of you have people management roles? Put your hands up if you are having teams. So, I will just give one mantra. This has nothing to do with what we spoke. This is a very different question. And I will tell you this from my H R experience. There are three parts to a person. Skill set, tool set, mindset. Skill set, tool set, mindset. I'll start with the tool set. I am going to a college and I am hiring students and I will pick up an engineering student for the job that person has to do. The college's job is to make, produce better engineers. So, what will a college teach? If I am picking up a mechanical engineer, they'll say, how do you run a lathe machine? How do you cut this? How do you do that? How do you fix machinery, etc.? He has to do that for four years to develop the tool set. So, when you go to the college, you will hire somebody who is top in the class, has done great internship, da-da-da. And then you will start looking at, and all of this is being equal, then you will start looking at a skill set. And what is a skill set? Skill set is something which enables me to deliver what I am doing. It could be a communication skills. It could be my ability to present my ideas. It could be how I show up at workplace. It could be how I dress up. All of it is a combination. Okay? So, you go to a college, you look at a person, you say, great marks. He has done great internship. He has done something which means tool set pe usko bahut saare points mil gaya. Then you look at the skill set. You see, bahut achi se baat kar raha hai, bada presentable hai. Very good. So, you give marks for skill set. And then you hire the person. The mindset, which is the critical part, ko time pe show up nahi karta hai. You cannot trust that person. He is sloppy with the way, his commitment to himself. Okay? Now, would you want to have that person in your team or not? No? He is the topper in the class. He speaks very well. It could be individual work. Sloppy, low commitment, not dependable, not trustworthy. So, the point here is, when you are looking at your team as administrators, as people managers, what is most important is, skill is teachable. Tool set is teachable. Mindset is not teachable. That's the most difficult part, which is where you need to invest the most. You can change a person and say, go for this class, learn that. It's continuation to the innovation answer. Where if you are able to see the mindset of the person, the rest of it is something which you can mold and change. So, invest more on the mindsets of people. Get the right people who have the right mindset and attitude. And the rest of things will fall in place. It's not so much about the skill set. And on that note, we will stop here.
Thanks, Tanuja, for wonderful... My heart was slightly bleeding for not remembering what India has done. Sharmaji, you asked, ki India ne kya kiya innovation? Today, in the month of August, we are likely to create a world record through ISRO. ISRO is a great thing that India has done. The first rocket was carried in a bullock cart. Remember, the first rocket was carried in a bullock cart and today, God bless us, we are likely to land on moon. Second is, I think somebody said, is it all the human involved in innovation or somebody else's innovation? I was reading Japanese bullet train. When it was designed, they had a problem. When it was entering a tunnel or coming out of a tunnel, boom, boom, boom sound. And the residents living around this tunnel